Must learn to be servant of all. Grant that putting aside all selfish ambition, they may seek to be the instruments of your will and carry out your purpose for the welfare of your people. May they both seek and see your glory in happier human lives through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's 5:30, December 2nd, 2019, and I'll call this meeting of the Fergus Falls City Council to order. Roll call, please.
Here.
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 We have a quorum. First item of business on the agenda this evening is the approval of the agenda, and I'll call on City Administrator Andrew Bremson.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor, members. Good evening. I don't have anything to add this evening, but I do want to note Councilmember Hicks has asked that items one and four removed from the consent agenda for further discussion.
Sounds good. With that, is there a motion to approve the amended agenda?
I'll offer that.
Thank you, Krista.
I'll second.
Thank you, Caroline. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, that motion carries. There are no public hearings or bids to award this evening. Under petitions and communications, we have a resolution acknowledging the retirement of Kirsten Danielson, and so I will read this. Whereas Kirsten Danielson has submitted her intent to retire effective December 6th, 2019, and whereas Kirsten began her employment with the city of Fergus Falls on January 3rd, 2000 as a computer programmer, and she has remained in this position until the present time. Now therefore be it resolved by the Fergus Falls City Council to accept Kirsten Danielson's resignation and thank her for her nearly 20 years of dedicated service to the city of Fergus Falls. The above and foregoing resolution was offered at a regular meeting of the Fergus Falls City Council held on December 2nd, 2019 by Councilmember Justin Arnison, who moved its adoption and was seconded by Councilmember Jim Fish and was adopted by the following vote. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 The resolution is approved. Thank you, Kirsten.
Can I just say that I'm very grateful for 20 years almost here and people all working with everybody. It's been awesome. I love my job. I still love my job, and hopefully Holly will come in and just, you know, fill that role really well. I'm just looking forward to retirement.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Kirsten. All right, under the consent agenda, as Andrew mentioned, items number one and four have been removed. Is there any other items anyone would like to speak to individually? If not, I'd entertain a resolution adopting, approving the rest of the consent agenda. Thank you, Brent.
Second.
Tom, thank you. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes.
The resolution is approved. Item number one is a motion approving the November 18th, 2019 city council minutes. Anthony, did you have a?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out clarifications, as I apologize I wasn't here, but obviously we approved the tax abatement on properties on the $5,000 or five years, whichever is greater. I just wanted to clarify that that was, and that does exclude rental houses. I mean, it says owner occupied structures, and I just want to make sure that was, that was the intent of the, of the resolution.
It did state that specifically, and then also we amended it so that it's not transferable, so it's just only to the original owner.
Okay, thank you. With that, I'd make the motion to adopt the minutes.
There's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Jim, thank you. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, that motion carries. Item number four is a resolution approving the 2020 lobbyist services contract with Joel Carles. Go ahead, Anthony.
Yeah, and my kind of question on this was that obviously, you know, we're paying Joel the same money as, as previously, and I just wondered, do we really need his, his services as much as we did previously? And I wasn't kind of sure what, what is he doing for the landfill, because I thought the landfill was already kind of a done deal. And, I mean, we're splitting the $44,000 between the Downtown Riverfront project, the landfill, and then capital projects related to tax initiatives.
Yep.
And I was kind of curious what the landfill piece was.
Sure. Your Honor, Councilmember Hicks, I knew you were going to ask that, and I'm glad you did. Recently, I was meeting with Joel Carlson about our upcoming sales tax initiatives, and one of the things that we got to talking about was some of the work he does for other cities, and he's got a couple cities in the metro area that have had similar landfill issues related to permitting with the PCA that have resulted in increased rates like we experienced here in the last couple of years, and he's successfully gotten these communities several hundred thousands of dollars, if not millions, I don't remember the exact numbers off the top of my head, that was directly related to getting the rates stabilized and under control. And so in talking to him, we said, well, geez, we're experiencing that same thing here. We need to be talking about that at the legislature and advocating for those interests in Fergus Falls as well. His lobbyist contract is before you this evening is really a catch-all. Anything and everything we want him to work on, he's willing to do. I called out the landfill specifically because it would be something that we haven't done previously and would be new, and because it's a good funding source for us that doesn't necessarily impact the tax levy. So that's why I called out the landfill specifically, but this contract is really general in the sense that he's going to work on anything and everything that we put in front of him as it relates to council priorities, other priorities, and to your first question, I do think he's going to have heavy lifting to do this session, primarily with the Downtown Riverfront project and our bond request, but if it is in fact the council's initiative to move forward with five sales tax questions, that's a heavy lift in itself. So I, I think having somebody hands-on down there is going to be very vital to moving these things forward, and if we can get some bonus programming related to the landfill, I think that's a positive as well, and Joel's the top lobbyist for those communities that that have done that successfully. So that's, that's the angle we're taking on that.
Thank you. With that, I'll make the motion to approve the.
The resolution, offer the resolution?
I'll second that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Justin. Any further questions? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Under ordinance and resolutions, tonight we have a first reading of ordinance 96-7 series rezoning property along the 1700 and 1800 blocks of South Cascade from RA to R2 as requested by Rognes Development. And did you have anything to add on that?
Nope, this is the development right along Cascade, going from RA to R2. There was two public hearings held related to this at the planning commission level because the first one wasn't properly noticed. The neighborhood gave feedback, and it was ultimately suggested by the planning commission that we move forward with this rezon.
All right. So we just need someone to introduce that this evening?
I'll introduce that.
Thank you, Jim. Item number two is a second reading of ordinance 94-7 series amending city code 2.27 and 2.37 and repealing sections of city code chapter four. This has been before the councils had a first reading. If there's any questions, we'll direct them to our city attorney. If not, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 The resolution is approved. Item number three is a resolution acknowledging a conflict of interest declaration for the Small Cities Development Grant, and Ralph, do you just want to take this?
Sure. I'll make a few comments. This is at the mayor's request. He wanted the council to take a formal action, recognizing that he's being completely transparent in applying for a grant through the Small Cities Development Program, that he intends to comply with all of their requirements of their application. This is a grant program that's available to other members of the community, and our other members of the community are encouraged to look into it and make application as well. But the mayor does not participate or make any approvals or recommendations regarding the application, but he felt that in the interest of being completely transparent to the public, that it would make sense to bring this issue at a formal council meeting and request the council to pass a resolution acknowledging that he has made this disclosure and indicating that the council has no objections to the mayor making an application for such a grant.
Any questions, Tom?
I'll offer that.
Resolution, thank you, Tom.
I'll second that.
Justin, thanks. Any, do you have any questions? Just be transparent.
And just for the record, this is at your home, for improvements to your home.
Yep. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Resolution is approved. Under presentation of claims, tonight we have claims in the amount of 834,000, not 8 million, but 834,000.
I noticed that.
It's not even our finance director's fault.
We're in this together. We have.
Until it's your fault.
Claims in the amount of 834,944.36, and if there are any questions, we'll direct them to our finance director, and if not, I'll entertain a resolution approving those payments. Thank you, Jim.
I'll second.
Thank you, Krista. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 There are no, I'm sorry, the resolution's approved. There are no board committee and department reports. We're going to wait until 6:00 PM for the levy, or the budget and levy presentation. There's no old or unfinished business, Tom. Do you have any jokes?
I could trade some funny gifts.
Scott?
In the continuing education series of what it costs to run the city, I could make a comment on one thing that we passed tonight if you like.
Certainly.
Among our consent agenda items tonight was the purchase of a garbage truck, and just for the sake of information, a lot of folks don't realize that it costs $250,000 to buy a garbage truck, and they don't last all that long. They only last about five years from the looks of this, and I thought they lasted longer than that, but is that about right, Lynn? Five years about what we get out of a garbage truck?
It lasts longer, but our, our trade-in value is much higher if we trade it off sooner.
Very good. So, just thought I'd mention that so that people get a, an awareness of, you know, what it is that we've got in the way of assets and equipment and what it costs to run the city.
Thanks, Scott. That's one minute, you got 14 more?
That's. We can go line by line, but I don't think we're up for that.
On that line, when, when we, when we say the last five years, you're talking about the chassis, not the dump truck itself, or is it the whole truck?
It's the whole truck, yeah.
Is the whole truck?
Yeah, so, yeah, our trade-in value is greater and our maintenance costs after that point just steadily increase, so we're throwing a lot of money into equipment. If we got rid of it sooner, like we do now, our, our value is better.
I got a question, Your Honor.
Yes.
The lights on Tower and Lincoln that are still, you know, stoplights, when are we going to expedite the piece that we need to fix that so they come back to be in traffic lights?
I don't know that we can expedite it. A cabinet is ordered, and it should be delivered hopefully by Christmas, is what we're being told.
So it'd be a Christmas present to the city?
Yeah.
And its residents?
And then from there, it's dependent on the electricity schedule.
Install, yeah.
And he'll make it a priority.
Yeah.
But it's the manufacturing of the cabinet that's what we're waiting for right now.
Right. So, yeah, another number of comments about that.
I kind of like the public works Q and A. This is, this is nice.
Again, another thing that I was going to bring up in budget, but, but this'll, you know, as we've got time now, people can think about it. Obviously, next year, as, as many people may or may not know, there will be no WeFest, and one of the things that the Center for the Arts is looking at is doing a mini country weekend in Fergus, the 21st, 22nd downtown, 21st, 22nd of August downtown, and obviously they're looking to kind of basically raise money to pay for the acts, and they've got a couple of acts that they're looking at, which would be about $15,000, and they're going to look for sponsorship, and something that, you know, if we're going to spend, you know, we're at almost a million dollars on the Downtown Riverfront project, you know, I'm not saying we do the whole 15,000, but, you know, maybe that's something we should look at in terms of marketing and sponsorship for that, to get people downtown. They're going to combine it with the Lincoln Arts Festival, so, you know, they're looking to get, you know, 500 people plus to come downtown for that weekend, and, you know, somewhere in the budget, you know, maybe we could look at how we can find some money, whether it's coming out of community development or something like that, but it's a great opportunity to, you know, bring people downtown and would be, you know, something to showcase downtown. And there's a void because there's no WeFest this year, for those that like rock and roll and country music. So, something, something to, just to, you know, ponder and give some thought to.
Could we invite the Center for the Arts to a meeting and have them, tell us a little bit more about their plan?
I'm sure, yeah. I just, I literally just spoke to Michael this afternoon about it, so, but, I mean, we could probably set that up for committee of the hall or something like that.
Yeah. Can I call on you, put you on the spot, Steve? Did you want to talk about Over the River for a few minutes?
Well, I actually want to talk about a couple things. Oh, enough on what Anthony was talking about. We've been talking with Michael about collaborating with him, changing the Chow Down into a two-day event and doing it with this music event, and hopefully we can have not just old-time country music, which I do like, but also some music that might appeal to some younger people so that we have an event that will go all day long, both weekends, tie in the airports for flying, so bringing people into the game and so forth. So I think it's a, it's going to be a fantastic opportunity, and we've only just started talking about it, and I know that we're going to be involved in it as well. Over the River, for those of you that don't know, Santa will be spotted on a weather radar sometime around 10:30, 10 o'clock in the morning on Saturday, as he approaches probably Grand Forks, it's going to be blasted out over all four radios that Santa will be arriving at the Ferguson Airport, landing at 11 o'clock. So there is going to be a photo shoot available, Santa following that, it'll be one hour. Santa following that will come downtown. Most of the activities will take place starting at noon. A lot of the stuff will start at 2:00, but of course, the horse carriage rides will be two of those, they start at noon. The free hot chocolate apple cider cookies starts at noon and will go till 5:00. At the Christmas tree lighting, there'll be another group doing the hot chocolate, so a lot of hot chocolate. I think there are six music events, primarily they will take place in the council chambers. The last one that will be is the 204th Army Brass Band that's coming from Fort Snelling. They're doing a concert from 4:00 till 4:30. Following that, there is going to be a very brief honorarium of the December 7th attack from 1941, because that occurred on December 7th. We're not trying to, you know, promote violence or anything, just recalling the fact of that Otter Cove has got some, several events going on with, with their group. They're going to be on the alley side of their area. Most of the activities will take place there. Fortunately, we have snow, so there is going to be a cross-country ski clinic put on by the Nordic, Port County Nordic Ski Association. So if you don't know anything about cross-country skiing, there'll be a half-hour demonstration that's at 4:00. Another new feature this year is the Paw Parade, and so that's a parade down Court Street from Lincoln to Washington with three different prize levels, one of them being for best costume. Our dog already has his, but it's probably not going to win, it's just pretty standard. Anyway, there's going to be a lot of, a lot of interest in that, a lot of people that want to come to that. You can register either the day of at 2:00 at the corner of Lincoln on Court Street, or you can register at Humane Society, or you can register at K9 Acres. K9 Acres is coordinating the parade. All, there's a $5 charge to put your dog in or cat into the parade. All proceeds are given to the Humane Society. And, oh, Tulai Reindeer this year. They are sponsored by one of our local businesses. I counted up the other day, and I think between people that are donating money for it or, or doing something, I think we have over 40 different individuals or companies or businesses that are participating. I think that's really great. The Art Crawl begins at noon, that goes till 5:00. At 5:00, people start migrating. Santa's from 2:00 to 5:00. At 5:00, people start migrating over to Wright Park. There are, then are there three trees we're hiding? Three trees will be lit for the Christmas tree lighting. There'll be a, a very short invocation and a very short speech by the mayor.
Maybe.
By, by you, yes.
Maybe short.
Maybe with your cap. But anyway, following the Christmas tree lighting will be the fireworks that go off over Wright Park. There's an effort to try to move the geese out, but we don't have a big panic by the geese down in the river. But anyway, while the fireworks are going off, the brass band will be playing the Star Spangled Banner again this year. I think it's going to be a great event, and Natalia sent me the list of things going on. It was four pages long, so we'll have to go to our website, ffriver.org, and there'll be a list of all these different things, and I hope everybody comes down and participates in one manner or another.
Thanks so much, Steve, to you and to the Downtown Riverfront Council and all the businesses that have helped support and sponsor that. Really looking forward to that. It's this coming Saturday, December 7th, all day long.
Your Honor, I know Steve was saving the best for last, but also there will be petticoat rides available, from what I understand?
Not only is there going to be petticoats, but the grand marshal for the parade is none other than Bud Norris, and he's going to be riding in a petticoat.
Oh.
He'll lead the.
I think that they're still looking for petticoat volunteers, so any council members that want to go and get a good workout. It's, this year they're using an electric assist bike. It's, I can vouch that last year's bike was challenging, and this bike sounds like it's easier to pedal, so if that, if you're worried about that, don't be, you'll be fine, so.
Did last year's bike have four-wheel drive?
Um, no, but thanks to our public works department, the streets were crystal clear, and, yeah, turns out Lincoln has a slight uphill. I didn't know that until last year, so.
And against the wind, so, yeah, it's pretty hard.
Fighting all odds.
Yeah. Well, you got to ride up the hill at some point, I guess.
So we will, if anyone has anything else, we'll just take a short recess. We just have to, just so the public knows, we have to wait, legally have to wait until 6:00 PM to do the budget presentation and the final adoption of the budget, so. Scott, did you?
Is this, Bill, is this part of the budget presentation?
It is.
So, because I thought if it wasn't, we could talk about this a little bit separate.
Nope, that's part of it. It's just, um, the landfill rates related.
All right. We'll take about a five-minute recess, and then we'll come back.
Let everybody get in the door, President.
All right, everyone, we will reconvene, and I'll call on Bill Tom, our finance director, to get us started with the 2020 budget and levy presentation. Good evening, Bill.
Good evening. Thank you, Your Honor. We are here to present for you the budget for next year, for 2020, and looking at our calendar, you can see where we've been. This process started last spring, and we did present in detail you, to you in September, so I'll try to hit the highlights here tonight. But as you recall, we approved a preliminary levy and a preliminary budget back in September. Now, the tax levy committee did get back together since that time and then made some changes. So the budget you have before you tonight, the levy is down a little bit from what we had in September, and then we did move some budget numbers around as well. So I'm going to just verbally talk through a list of what was changed. It's not in the slides, it's not in the presentation, but to let you know what was changed since we last talked about this in September. So, if you recall, we had $35,000 in the budget for the Cleveland Avenue boards for the rinks. We moved that over to street lighting. Tax levy committee felt that would be a good project to do. We'll get into that a little bit more in the presentation as well, but we're looking at a new street lighting system, turning that over to Otter Tail Power, and we would have that a monthly fee, but it'll be a new system, new wire going in the ground. All the maintenance would be done by them. So the city was able to bring down our maintenance costs, move some funds over from the Cleveland boards for this year, and then be able to do that project. So that's in here, that's one of the changes. We also thought, let's hold off on those boards for this year because we have that dry land facility that the Hockey Association is putting up. Let's let them get that project done, and then we'll go back and look at this outdoor rink. So that's some of the rationale behind that one. We did cut $40,000 out of the park budget that was in there, thinking of the NP Park project. Now, we are not saying that we're not going to do that, we're going to look at doing that a different way, and probably making annual transfers from our liquor store to do that park project, maybe over five years doing those transfers. So still trying to get the project done, but not affecting the property tax levy with that, using liquor store profits to do that instead. We did reduce the golf course budget. Their capital portion of the budget of $70,000, we decreased that to 40,000, the historic level that we used to carry in there. Now with that, then, we did add back 6,000 to do an audit for the golf course in 2020 of the 2019 financial statements. So I'll be coming back to you with a proposal. I did reach out to the city's audit firm, they can maybe do that at the same time they do the city audit, around the third week in March is what we would look at. So I'll come back to you with that when I have final numbers on that. We did add $10,000 to the administration budget for a website upgrade. We've heard a lot of comments, we've heard from some of you, from the Port Authority as well, looking at the Port Authority joining in on this project, but doing an overhaul of our website and getting that upgraded. So Lynn's very happy about that being included in here. We hope you vote that approval in. We did reduce fireworks from 7,000 down to 5,000, kept that where it's at, funding those, the summer fest that we contribute to and the Over the River Festival. We reduced elections by $10,000. We had like 37,000 in there, brought it down to 27, because you as a council said it was okay to combine those polling places, we could have less judges, more efficient, and there we saved $10,000 by, by doing that. With retirement that's happening and changing in staffing, we were able to cut about $11,500 out of the budget, so a reduction there. And then we put the dairy property demolition project into the Port Authority budget, so that's in the capital side of it. It's happening in there. It's going to show up in an asset account actually as land held for resale, but on the general fund side, then, we have the grant for 600,000 that was put in here, $400,000 used the fund balance, and then the purchase of that trail buffer area between the general fund and then the Port Authority. So that's the dairy. And then we did tweak the estimates on the Glacial Edge Trail that comes from Veterans Park over to Union Avenue over here. We bumped that up from 700,000 to 800,000, little better estimates. And then this Downtown Riverfront project, we adjusted those estimates as well, and we'll get to that number. I do have a slide on that showing you where that's at. So I wanted to share a lot of that detail with you because it drives what we see what has changed since September. So our assumptions, the same as they were in September, so I won't go through their line by line. by line, but you can see from our wages, health insurance, our utilities, insurance of, the different insurances, what we're working in for our cost increases from the city side. So proposed revenues, 42 million, 164,885, with expenditures of 40 million, 717,099. So that expenditure number is the one resolution we'll be asking you to approve, the approved budget for 2020. The property tax levy, 6 million, 604,784. And then we have that tax rate, the 2019 rate there of 58.601%, going to 58.893, or half a percent change in that rate. So the total budget is comprised of those various fund types. Again, we went over those in detail in September, but from our general fund and then special revenue, debt service, capital projects, you can see totals, those revenues and expenditures. Just a pie chart showing you where the revenues come from. The city is funded from all sorts of revenue, from charges for services on those utility bills, local government aid, different types of police, fire aids, those show up in a governmental line item. You can see the property taxes are 16% of everything that the city does, so many different facets to the city funding coming in. Then the expenditures, we spend in all sorts of different areas. You know, your wages and benefits take up, you know, about 29% total, and then capital outweighs when we're doing large projects, capital improvements to our facilities are in there, liquor store inventory is in there because we're showing the purchases side, then the sales are in that services side on the other. So in September, we came before you and presented a levy of 6 million, 682,362, or a 4.95% increase. This resulted in a change to that tax rate of 1.68%. So that tax rate looking at that time going up 1.68%. This is prior to the Tax Levy Committee bringing that levy down sign. So now, when we look compared to our 2019 levy, we have that 2020 at 6 million, 604, 784, an increase of 237,598, or 3.73%. And then that change to the tax rate of half a percent change in that. So with tax rates, with the levy, how does this all fit together? First, you know, the home in Fergus Falls, a residence or a business gets valued by the county assessor to determine what's that property value, because that's what property taxes are based upon. Then the class rates are established by the state of Minnesota for, so for instance, oh, your residential home has a class rate of 1%. So if that's a $100,000 house, class rate of 1% gives you a tax capacity then of $1,000. Now, there are market value exclusions, as you can see on your tax statements, that come into play as well. But then you as a city council establish a tax levy, so there's often a lot of confusion of, okay, if my market value of my house goes up or down, that changes your levy. No, the city council sets a tax levy at a flat dollar amount, that's 6 million, 604, 784. And you basically tell Otter Tail County, go and spread that over, over the properties of the city that's spread over based on how they're valued. So you take that levy, divide it by all those tax capacities that are added up, divide that out, that's how you get that property tax rate. So rate times the individual tax rate gives that tax bill. Again, there's those exclusions and things in there, so it's not as simple as that formula lays off, but that's kind of the big picture of it. This is just a chart showing where our levies have been, and it's updated for these new recommendations coming to you tonight. You can see that levy again at 6.6 million and 58.893, so not a lot of change in that tax rate. So a comparison here with our other taxing jurisdictions, as well as the estimated tax on a $125,000 house and a $500,000 business. So see those rates across the top? I want to point out, we are showing them now separately for the Woodland Heights annexation area. That was the one area of annexation where we phased in the tax impact. So in 2020, the Woodland Heights area, that tax rate is 50% of all the other tax rate for the property that was already in the city prior to that. They would have started out at 1/6, then 1/3, now 1/2. So you can see over six years, that tax rate is being phased in. So just showing those comparisons for you. You can see with our other taxing jurisdictions, and then the total tax rate going from 123.634 to 123.853. So again, not a lot of change in that tax rate when you combine all taxing jurisdictions as well. LGA, just a nice little history for you to show that. In 2020, the city is receiving a nice bump in LGA of 85, in excess of $85,000. So that's what's bringing that up slightly from 19 to 20. So taxes and state aid, the general fund, we're going up in taxes, 175,795, that's included in that tax levy that we already talked about. There's the local government aid increase. We are losing some state aid for our police state aid for PERA, that sun sets at the end of this year. And then the LCCMR grant coming in there for $600,000. General government then, reminding you, we eliminated a planner position filled out with contract services with Sourcewell, saving $59,000. We do have an election next year, so we put in 27,665. We are recodifying our ordinances, our administration department is well at work in that, upgrading our IT service server, which we do have on our, I think it's on a five-year schedule, we typically do that. General government buildings, we maintained 75,000, we didn't increase that number, but we maintained it. That's to maintain our tax-supported buildings. And then our website upgrade that I talked about in the beginning, we had 2,000 in there, so we increased that 10, as well, 1,000. We're replacing a fire engine, you already had approved that. We're looking at a generator for the fire department as well, and then we would finance those two together, and the first levy would start for that in 2021. Woodland Heights area, looking at getting that warning siren put up in that area. And then our police department is implementing a fraud investigations area and a, or a contract with Otter Tail County where we'll get new revenue of 58,000, we're estimating for that. Streets and highways, you as a council have made it a priority that we put more money into streets and highways. So in 2019, we went up 20%, we're going up that 20% again in 2020. I know, you know, you have all told us that, that you hear that from your constituents, so that's why we continue to put money into our streets. So the total budget for the seal coats and overlays would be the 374,400. We have a new levy starting, a 47,400 for the reconstruction of the Mount Faith area, that project that went all summer and got paved before the snow, it was good. And then the streetlights to Otter Tail Power. We are going to bring that before you at the next committee of the whole to go through it in more detail. Touched on in a little bit where we would turn over all streetlights to Otter Tail Power. Right now, they have all the wood poles, I believe, right, Guy? So anything on a wood pole, Otter Tail Power already owns, maintains, all that. We would be turning over like the ones that are on Washington here, those large Cobra poles. We would then come back maybe in a future year and look at our decorative downtown lighting as well. They would do all the maintenance, all the installation. So that's a really, we were excited to hear about that project. It really seems like a win-win where we get a new street lighting system for, you know, an investment of basically increasing 35, 37,000 a year, and we don't have to finance that system, bond for it, and levy for it that way. So.
And it's LED, it's all LED?
Absolutely, LED, so we see, we factored in those cost savings as well. So more to come on that at the next committee of the whole meeting, but giving you a heads up because we did move that around in the budget to include that. Fireworks, again, we talked about. We are maintaining our pre-trimming and removal at 180,000. Greater Fergus Falls, we're funding for 50,000. We have a new tax abatement for the Fergus Care Center at 16,000. So that 50,000 for Greater Fergus Falls, we decreased over here from the Port Authority. So we dropped that levies to a zero impact on the budget. Reminder, the Port Authority is facilitating, and they own the Lakes Country Service Co-op Level Four school that's currently under construction, should be finishing up pretty soon, I believe. And then the dairy property demolition and cleanup will happen, should be pretty well completed during 2020. Total library here, 930,817. You can see majority is property tax-supported, regional library, just another big portion of that. Streets, looking at Junius, Burlington, and Bancroft. We'll come back to you with more of that when those projects get developed and we can figure out how the funding sources would work for those, but they're the estimates. Talked about the Glacial Edge Trail. And then for the Downtown Riverfront project, one half of that project is in 2020, $2,650,000. That's the one where we're going to the state of Minnesota to ask for 50% funding, we've got significant donors for that project as well, as well as some other grants looking out there. But this is for one side of that, it's that two-block area, not tying up both blocks in one year. Enterprise funds, our liquor store, certainly operating in good operating income, we transfer a lot of those funds over to the general fund to keep property taxes down. Mentioned the NP Park project in the future. Refugees fund, we went through this in detail with the utility rate study. So within this budget presentation, are those utility rates, we talked about a 3% increase to the collection, 5.7% to the disposal, because we are receiving a direct increase in our disposal. Again, we go and collect the garbage that we dispose of at Otter Tail County, and our costs are going up 5.7, so we're, we need to build that in. Landfill fees, you have those pages on your desk, and there's some highlights on them. They look like this, on the first page, just making some changes to our landfill charges because of our disposal costs that we have going up. And then the soft goods as well there, that's would be couches, cushions, mattresses, those kind of things. So on the first page, just those changes going, MSW landfill fees from 19 to 20 dollars, and then just half of that because the way their measurement is out there, and soft goods going up $1 as well. On the other page in front of you has the dumpster rentals, roll-off rentals going from 15 to 16 dollars for that dumpster rental for a month. These are when you have special projects, someone orders a dumpster, I'm remodeling, I need that rod out to my house, so that, those are the instances where that is the case. Same with those roll-offs, and the pickup fees going up $1 there, and then $10 for the roll-off. We are not touching the demolition degree, Andrew touched on that earlier when we talked about Joel Carlson, our lobbyist contract. Because, yeah, we're not covering all our costs there, but our rates are pretty high, so we can't increase that right now, but we'll continue to monitor that and keep you informed. So those are those schedules. There's your monthly residential bill, looking at those changes in flexion and disposal, not increasing the free waste fee or the recycling fee, keeping those the same. Our sewer fund, again, we went through this in detail with the utilities, but maintaining profitability there. Looking at a 3% increase in the sewer fund. The one thing when we talk sewer fund, water, stormwater, a lot of infrastructure involved there. Because people may ask, well, why do you have to always maintain your profitability or worry about that? But a lot of lines in the ground that we have to maintain, that we keep a good water, sewer system, stormwater management, and that's why we, we build in these rates, because we're covering those future capital costs. We project that out for about 10 years. Water fund, same scenario there. Looking at a 10% in water, again, we have large projects that are coming due, reservoir, water tower recaps within the next five years, so we're preparing for that. Stormwater fund, going up 50 cents on that. In September, I presented to you a 75 cent increase, we backed that down 50 cents here. Equipment fund, that's our internal fund that we're fully, and looking at purchasing just shy of $800,000 of equipment in 2020, just like we talked about the garbage truck earlier, that's where those purchases come out of here. So that is what I have for you for a presentation tonight, and before we do approve the budget, we do need to allow the public any time to speak.
Sure.
With comments that they may have, but then I'll be looking for approval of the levy and the budgets.
Thank you, Bill. And we'll go ahead and go to the public hearing. If the council has any questions after the public hearing, we can ask Bill before we approve the budget. So at this time, I will open a public hearing on the 2020 Budget and Levy. Anyone wishing to speak to the issue, please come to the lectern, state your name, and address council. Welcome.
My name is Mike Rude, I own the property at the corner of 305 Cascade in Washington. It was my business address for many, many years. I just noticed now, every year, the market value has been going up and up and up. Now this year went up $2,700. I've been attempting to sell that property, and if anyone would be willing to pay that amount, I'd be more than glad to sell it. I just can't justify or see the justification of that increase.
Sure, so I, I can just make a comment on the process, and Bill, jump in and correct the wrong, but.
Sure.
It's the county assessor that sets the, the market value rates for all the properties within the city of Fergus Falls. There's a process of the equalization, board of equalization, which I think everyone's participated in at one time, and that happens in May when you get your statement, you get your statement in April, there's a board of equalization meeting that happens in May, which is your opportunity, going in front of four council members within the city to state your concerns, and then they will visit the property, take a look at it, and then make a ruling on that. So that's the process that, that's set up. I mean, we can, if you call City Hall, we're certainly happy to get you in touch with the county assessor, but the county assessor is the one that determines the market values within the city of Fergus Falls.
All right, well, that's what I was concerned with.
Sure.
So in other words, I have to wait till May to discuss this matter?
That's, that's when the proper channel is to.
I just, this is the first time I've approached this.
Certainly, certainly.
I wasn't familiar with it, I just saw there was a meeting.
Yep, yes.
Concerned with the increase.
You're, you're the second person I've talked to today that was a little bit confused about the process, but there is a, is it, is it correct it's April they come out?
I think you're, you know the dates, but feel free to certainly contact Doug Walvettney, now the assessor, he would be more than happy to talk to anyone, I'm sure, as well, so.
Sure.
And Lee over here.
This gentleman can also appear before the county, and they have a published date since the spring, and you're welcome to come and appeal at that hearing as well. But you need to come to the city first.
Yep, and the city brings it to the county, and the county ultimately makes the final decision.
All right, I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mike.
But I would say you, you should do, you should make your appeals sooner rather than later. I wouldn't wait till April so that it gets, because it's, there's a process, so. Done, yeah.
Jerome Anderson. I've been a business owner in outskirts of Fergus for many years, and I was annexed over the winter northwest Fergus Falls, so Westford, and you're working on that road at some point down the road, which I'm grateful for, it's been a bumpy, terrible road.
Is Otter Tail County actually doing that?
Well, it's Fergus city limits.
Yeah, it's a county road.
Yeah.
When does the city limits take effect on that?
Well, it's in city limits, but that is a county jurisdiction, that would.
I see, wonderful.
We'll take the credit, though.
I'm here to protest my taxes too, they've gone up 49.3%. So last year I paid $1,100, and this year I'm paying $1,600, which is exorbitant, and my problem is that when we had these meetings with the county to talk about, you know, taxes and different things, you know, you guys assured me that you were going to grandfather us in and not beat us to death, which wasn't the case, you know, we decided that we're not going to. know, we decided that we're not going to sue you because we figured what's going to happen in the end anyway, and we'd make it more streamlined for the county or the city, and just wanted to say, you know, I'm not happy, you know, you could have stepped it up a few increments at a time and not go up forty-nine percent, that's exorbitant, if it would have jumped up ten percent, I wouldn't be here, so I'm protesting that form of way you do it. Last year, you didn't have all my money, it was going to Fergus Township, and then coming back, but this year, you want it all, and you're taking a lot more than you really should. Can I ask, who here represents the northwest corner of Fergus?
Here are.
Four and three.
Yep, must do.
How long have you been there?
What's this?
How many years have you been in this corner?
On the council or living here?
Well, no, no, as far as being a representative.
Three years.
Okay, I'm going to run against you. Great day.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to the council on this? Seeing no one else, the public hearing is closed, and it's back to the council for any questions we have of Bill. You know, I have one question, you know, speaking of increases to business tax, again, I acknowledge that it's the county assessor that ultimately makes that determination of the market value, which, which then drives those large increases, but I would like to at least have the council discuss sometime in two thousand and twenty, when we have those instances where properties jump that much because of improvements made, or if people are investing in it, if there is a way that we could look at step in the future, you know, based in the future, like stepping, if there was a program that we could step, step that up.
Typically, the, to my knowledge, the step-in programs are probably with annexation.
Sure. I mean, there's abatement op, you know, I mean, there's, there's probably some different options.
Because everything we're following, it's all, I mean, it's not even the county assessor's realm, it's at the state legislative realm, I mean, our property tax system, so that's, you can have the discussion, I just don't want to get your hopes up.
Sure, again, because the second time I've heard that today, so maybe at least have that, having that public discussion, so people can understand the process and what we can or can't do in that area.
That's certainly fair, what we can and can't do is just an education process.
Thanks, Bill.
I think, I think on that point, it'd be a nightmare to kind of administer, you know, because you'd have one house that's getting, you know, you'd be down to individual properties that are on different rates, and from an administrative perspective, it would be...
I don't think you could even legally do that.
Yeah, I think it'd be a nightmare to kind of administer, but then...
But again, again, to have that discussion maybe would be helpful for the public, because this particular individual I spoke with earlier was someone who'd taken a vacant building, invested into it, knew there was going to be an increase, didn't expect to be hit with a forty-eight percent increase on the first year, and so if we have that discussion at the front end, you know, what we can or can't do, again, but just so people are aware.
Some of it could be the whole calendar of events of when projects are done, you know, the first year, you may be operational, but that valuation was done a year prior, so it's, it's the time lag of all the valuations too, that...
Sure.
Maybe you thought you were good, but that was on your old value, and now the improvements came on a year later, and so.
Sure, okay, thank you, Bill.
Certainly good topics to go through.
Other questions?
I got some questions on the budget, so obviously going through the individual line items, it would be your page twelve, on, on, you know, on this one.
In the book?
In the book, yep. Obviously, the three-oh-nine, which is other professional services, that's going up by a hundred-and-four-thousand dollars, and obviously, it says detail below, but...
Fourteen is the detail.
Yeah, and, but it's like, I wonder which one of this kind of like thirty or forty items is like gone up by a hundred thousand, because there's obviously a lot of different things in this, from kind of communications to obviously cleaning the police department, to G I S, to parking lots, to tennis, to kind of A S A girls' fast pitch.
Should I run down the list, and you're going to watch me just think out loud, because...
I mean, if you could pick which ones kind of like really significantly went up.
So the first one, communications, the website, that's ten thousand of it. Data processing, I would have to look, I don't know for sure, but it's only fifteen. Investment management is the same, that was there, PEG access is about the same. Planning services, that's new, there's fifty-eight thousand of that, hundred-plus, that's new, that's Sourcewell. Cleaning maintenance, City Hall is unchanged, computer support at the police department unchanged, cleaning should be unchanged, police other, I bet, is unchanged, fire relief, unchanged, let's, yes, we'd, airports, snow removal and mowing, I think that is up because we have had certainly a lot of snow and a lot of rain, so we've had a lot of snow removal and mowing, so I'm thinking that is up. Y M C A should be the same for lifeguards.
Greater Fergus Falls would be fifty thousand, that wasn't in there the previous year?
Correct. Yep, Greater Fergus Falls at fifty thousand. Yep, because before, that was just a levy in the Port Authority, so that's, what did we go up in total?
One oh three.
One oh three, there we go.
Okay, thank you.
Good, good question, though, that's...
And then, can I keep going, Ellis? Then, the next thing, I kind of, overall, an item four-three-three is dues and subscriptions, which is basically sixty kind of, you know, four, sixty-five thousand, it's obviously going up by, you know, five thousand, five hundred this year, and I wonder if that's something that we should really review, based of, you know, we're obviously members of, you know, L M C, G C M C, and, and other, other kind of, you know, other forms of subscription and, and kind of clubs, and I just wonder, I know, I know we get insurance through one of them, but is that something we should review in the sense of, do we need to belong to all of them?
And one other thing, besides those organizations we belong to, there is licensing as well, like if all our, if people have their different boilers license, or...
Right.
You name it out in the air, that's in that number as well, I wanted to make sure you knew it was more than just organizations.
Yep, and, and those ones are statutory that we have to have to operate, but I just wonder if that's something that like for next year, we should really sit down and look at that to see, do we need to belong to all of these different organizations, and you know, what's the benefit, you know, do we get, you know, like, I know we get the insurance through, like Minnesota cities, but, you know, what do we get out of the other ones, and, you know, are they cost beneficial?
Yeah, maybe that's a good item to discuss.
Always a good discussion.
At the committee of the whole, all of them at the same time, because I think in the past, sometimes we'll have a decision on one or the others, but...
Yep.
So maybe sometime prior to starting the next budget season, you know, later spring, we...
Yep, because I, I think my concern overall is that we're not, and I think, you know, later spring, we need to look at what is the impact of all of these things that are paying less, less property tax, and that like Hoot Lake is closing, you know, and, you know, some of the costs that we're incurring, you know, we, we can't keep pushing taxes up, you know, you know, basically to cover costs when we have a decreasing revenue, because we'll have more people like this gentleman tonight coming in, and I know, you know, from my own taxes, they've also gone up, and, and somehow, we have to try to get people to understand the difference between, you know, the county, nobody ever comes and complains about the county taxes going up, but they complain about the city taxes going up for some reason, so, we, we need to kind of like have a more broader-based education on, on that, but I, I think my, my concern about the future is that we've got, you know, as much as we've got, you know, you know, obviously, we're, we're trying to stimulate housing by giving them five thousand dollars back per house, you know, then that's actually going to take away, and then when you look at all the tax increment, you know, districts that we have, you know, all of those, you know, are revenue that, yeah, we're going to get it, but it's, it's probably, and not in my lifetime that I'm going to see that revenue come back to the city, and I would like to see us do more of like a five-year plan of what our income's going to be, bearing in mind that some of these properties are yielding less money to us, not more money to us, and, and, you know, we've got some big expenses, you know, because whether or not they go through, you know, how they go through, we have to pay for them, you know, like, you know, the fire department, you know, one, one truck is a million and a half dollars, you know, if we try to put that on, on our, on our taxes, then, you know, it, it doesn't have to worry, forty, forty percent is going to look pretty good, you know, so I, my concern is the longer, you know, the short to medium term, rather than just next year, and I think we, we keep looking at the budget in isolation of one year, and trying to focus on how do we keep it at three percent, and, you know, people's wages are only going up by two to three percent, so, yeah, that's my, that's my overall concern.
Thanks, Anthony, anyone else have questions, comments?
Comment, I think that, just tying into what Anthony had just mentioned, I'm thinking that last year around the budget discussion time, the suggestion was made to broaden the scope of it from a one-year deal to a three-year or a five-year deal, do you remember it that way, where we looked at putting the budget together with more of a three- or five-year plan rather than just one out, and I, that's what I remember our discussion about, but, you know, it wasn't done in this case, and I don't know that it was, you know, ever voted that it was, should have been done that way, but I just remember some conversation about it.
Probably, I know we talked at our one retreat about getting into more long-range financial planning, that's more what that would be, we probably wouldn't budget for three to four years, sometimes you could do a two-year budget, I've seen some cities do that, we've never entertained that here, but it's so hard when you get out beyond there because you're making a lot of assumptions, and, you know, we even learn more from September to now, so to actually budget for three to five years, but you need to plan for, tomato lime, I know, but it is a good concept.
That's probably where I remember hearing it, was in the discussion regarding the planning, and the planning that we saw that had the five-year plans with the, you know, like a fire truck and other things that were out there, a big number of items that we were trying to have placeholders for, and I was kind of combining those two items in my head with the planning side and the budget side.
Thank you, I'm just gonna, now I'm gonna segue with you a little bit.
Okay.
The last part of your budget here is the capital improvement plan, so last section of the booklet, we made quite a bit of changes to that, I'm so glad you brought this up because it really is, we're in the beginning stages of developing more of our long-range financial plan, we're certainly always doing it, I mean, our utility rates, we go up, we do a ten-year plan to come up with that for you, we do look at that as well, so this capital plan, going through all those utility rates, I did adjust some numbers there, I did adjust for the downtown plan here as well, the dairy in here, so this has been updated since September, and that's attached here as well to be included within this budget. Now, again, that's a planning document, because the numbers are in these capital improvement plans, doesn't mean they're funded, because they come back to you in those, you know, we're going to do this street project, we're going to come back to you to do that, but this is that planning document, so that ties right into doing more of this, we're going to get you guys more involved in twenty-twenty with this, we're going to start earlier and bring that back, so we can walk through before it even, you know, we're going to lay that out as we get through December here, but, so we're working on it, and this is step one, so you'll want to comb through that a little bit more after tonight as well.
Thanks, Bill. We'll go ahead and get a resolution on the floor adopting the twenty-twenty levy.
I'll offer that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Jim.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Brent, did you have one, any, another comment?
This, the document that's in here then, this capital improvement plan, that's essentially the same thing that we saw six months ago or so, right? Or has it seen some changes?
It has changed, it, it has changes in there, with all those, we've been talking about the sales tax legislation, all the different priorities you have a council have been laying out, we put those in here, so you're going to see, I can't even rattle those five projects off.
Fire, fire, public safety.
So the things you have talked about, we've been starting to implement and get them in here in this time of time.
Okay. All right, with that, ready to vote? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Now...
Yes.
Yes.
That resolution is approved, and we also need a resolution adopting the twenty-twenty budget that's been presented as well. I'll offer that, Your Honor. Tom?
I'll second.
Thanks, Caroline. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Now...
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved, thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
There is no new business, no miscellaneous announcements, and unless there's anything else to come before the council, we are adjourned.